I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, welcome us. Thank you for those of you who came. I think we'll start out with the superintendent's report, as always.
Board President Marquess, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present superintendent's comments this evening. I've had a busy few weeks. Again, as part of my 100-day plan, lots of engagement opportunities throughout the community. We had a community meeting at Centaurus on the 11th of October, and appreciate board members that were there, appreciate community that came out. I had a community meet and greet yesterday up in Nederland and had a great turnout. Thank you, everybody who was there to kind of engage. And we have several events coming up this week. Wednesday I'll be at Roomfield High School, and Thursday at Southern Hills Middle School. So I encourage the community to come out. It's a great opportunity to get to know one another and ask questions and have input as we think about our future in Boulder Valley School District. And we've had just some really great conversations. I've really appreciated the questions and the input. Also had several other meetings that I attended over the past few weeks. I want to thank our district parent council. We had our second meeting on the 17th. Just great insight from representatives from throughout the community, great questions. We're diving into topics where people want to know more information, and it's been really helpful for me to be able to engage them on things that we're thinking about as a governance team and also as staff. So very, very helpful. This past Saturday, I was at the Latino Parent Summit, had an opportunity to present and engage with lots of our community partners around empowering our parents, our Latino parents, and understanding our system and advocating for their kids. And so really enjoyed that. And this past Monday, I had a great meeting with all of our charter school leaders. And so our charter school principals come together three times a year and had a great chance to sit down with them and talk with them about things they're thinking about and learning more about where they're headed. So that was wonderful. And then finally, I just had a great meeting at the Nederland Bus Terminal yesterday. And want to just thank our bus drivers and all that they do. I learned so much being out there and meeting with employees that have been with the district for 30-plus years, driving bus transporting our kids. I just thought it was wonderful. And I've agreed to go up there when it snows, so they can get on the front lines of as we think about the challenges that they go through. And the public wouldn't know this, but when it does snow, about midnight, they start driving runs and make sure that our roads are safe and that our students are safe in buses. And so I told them that I wanted in on some of that. And so we'll be trying to set that up as it snows, and I'm sure I'll have a lot to learn when they do that for me. And so it just has been a great few weeks. Again, 100-day plan's going really, really well. For those who want to know more information, bbsd.org. You can click on the links and learn about where I've been, the 28 points that we're working on in engagement excellence and equity, and where we're at. And just a reminder to the board, on the 13th, I'll be giving a report out to the board and the public on all the things that we've accomplished, where there's still work that needs to happen and the themes that are emerging from the fierce few months on the job here. So, thank you.
And thank you. Any questions for Rob about his comment? Okay, then we'll move on to public participation. We recognize the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of our schools. We just remind you to confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. We also ask you to limit your presentation to two minutes, and recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. So if your remarks could be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12, that would be great. There's a lighting system on the podium, starting at green when your two-minute starts, turning to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turning to red at the end. And so we only have one speaker tonight, so I'd invite Jana Gelderman-Moffett to come up. Thank you.
And the CDC recommend 8.5 to 9.5 hours of sleep at night. And anyone who is a teenager knows that they do not get that during the school week. And one major factor in that is a shift of the circadian rhythms in the teenage student. They shift one to three hours so that their midnight feels like your nine o'clock. So it's not a choice that they don't go to bed earlier. It's actually a biological drive that pushes that. Problem is, is that puts them into chronic sleep deprivation. And what we know from excellent studies, that chronic sleep deprivation decreases mood, it decreases depression, it decreases anxiety, it increases schizophrenia, it increases ADHD symptoms, it increases suicidality, it increases obesity, it increases mortality due to motor vehicle accidents from fatigue. It decreases concentration in school, it decreases memory, it decreases retention, it decreases test scores, it decreases IQ points, and it decreases academic success in the future, and it decreases attendance. One major thing that we can do to help our students with this is to move to late start. It can reverse all of that in our students. We notice students that get the biggest positive impact from this is the lower socioeconomic group because they are most dependent on the bus system. So I really urge you to overcome the logistic barriers to late start. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to board communication. Would anyone like to start? Kathy?
First, thank you for coming and sharing that with us. It's always helpful to get the scientific medical perspective on this, so I really appreciate you coming and helping us with that. As you know, we're considering that issue as we go forward. And so thank you for coming and doing that. Before I get into some of my board comments, I just wanted to say one thing, because I don't think we would be the district that we are today, and I don't think we would have some of the great programs and impact on education and other things if it weren't for Virginia Patterson, who passed away this last weekend. We stand where we are on the shoulders of a lot of people who have given a lot to this community. And Virginia gave -- I get too chucked up. I've known her my whole life, because I went to St. Aidan's, and I knew Father Pat, and I knew her as Mrs. Pat. And so I kind of got to watch her grow from being a minister's wife into a leader of the community. And you go to Boulder Community Hospital, and the whole maternity wing is named after her. So I just think it's important to remember all the people that have helped us to get to where we are. I remember going to the 50th anniversary at Arapahoe, and she was there because she helped get the CTEC program started. And the teachers there were so happy to have her there. And I think you were there, weren't you, Richard? And it was just great to have her come and help celebrate and see what the district's become. So I just think it's important to remember people like Virginia Patterson, because we wouldn't be where we are if it wasn't for people like that. So I just wanted to start with that. Anyway, really quickly, I went to CBOK, and as always, CBOK was great. They are greatly appreciative of any direction that we can give them. And so it was -- I'm always impressed with the level of detail that the CBOK members give to their decisions and to their oversight, which is what they're charged with. So it's always really nice to go to that. I was able to get the tail end of the district parent council with you, Rob. And the message I got in the few minutes I was there on late start times was, "We've been surveyed to death. We don't want to be surveyed anymore on this. Thank you. Make a decision." Because we asked, "Do you want to be surveyed?" And I don't think there was a single parent in that room who didn't say, "Been there, done that. Thank you." So that was an interesting piece of feedback. So anyway, I figured I could say that, and you couldn't say that, Rob. You were much more diplomatic. Went to the Centaurus meet and greet, and Richard, you were awesome there. It was just great to see you working with the parents, and just a simple thing like picking up the microphone so that parents could feel like they had an ability to talk and ask Rob questions. And Rob did a great job. But Richard, it was just great to see you there. So Jenny and I just kind of sat in the background and let Richard do all the work. And Donna was there as well. And so it was just nice to have the community there and to watch the questions and all of that. And then I already sent you all an email about CASB, but a couple of quick things. One was I went to the breakout session that Randy did, and it was one of the best breakout sessions that we had. It was on communications for board members. And I think that a lot of the board members who were there got a lot of really helpful information out of that breakout session. Sometimes the CASB breakout sessions, I have to say, are not always the most informative, but that one was -- I know Tina's looking at me. That one was really good. And so I know Randy put a lot of effort into that, so just a shout out to Randy. And then I think the two takeaways from the CASB was I sent out the language on the dyslexia. I don't know what you thought of the new language, Shelley, but they just rewrote it to add in more specificity, if I could talk, around what the definition, where it would come from. So citing to the NIH and to the international dyslexia definitions of it, and helping frame what that would look like. I think that was the biggest change. And then not making anything mandatory, but also asking for funding. So supporting screening, supporting professional development, and asking for additional funding around dyslexia. And there's very little pushback at the delegate assembly on that issue. So they had just worked to rewrite that. So I thought that was really helpful. And then on a couple of the things like seat belts and changing start times, the delegate assembly was pretty strong in wanting to push back on adding any new mandates. So it was -- I always, as I said when I started this process, I really respect the whole democratic process of delegate assembly. We get a little bit too much in the weeds, so I'm mindful of what Tina says, is we don't really prioritize. So something like, you know, seat belts gets the same amount of energy and attention as overall funding issues. And maybe we should figure out a way to prioritize some of the amendments and things that are brought forward. But it's a good process, I think, overall. And so I thank the board in letting me be your delegate. And I think we have a good legislative platform going forward, and I'll look forward to hearing how we can advocate. I mean, we certainly don't know very much, because we won't know much until after the election about whether we will or won't have money to be dealing with. So there's not much to say about the legislative agenda going forward just yet, I don't think. But thanks to the board for letting me serve you. And if you have any questions about it, I don't want to take up a whole lot of time tonight, but I just wanted to talk about all of that. So I think that's everything I have for board comments. So, thank you.
Okay, who else has a comment? Donna?
Just quickly, I won't take up too much time, but the district audit committee met today to review financial statements for the 12 months that ended June 30th, 2018. And I'm happy to report that we spent less money than budgeted, so we have roughly $8 million one-time funds available. We'll be looking closely at how to use those funds to best benefit our students. And I also wanted, after today's meeting, I have to come up to speed on wanting to fully understand why our budgets much higher than we spent. And the answer to that question will help guide me and the whole committee on next year's budgeting process. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley, Richard, Kitty? Richard?
Just a couple of things. The Centaurus meet and greet was wonderful, and thanks for the compliment, even though I just only passed the microphone. Played Hannah for a little bit, or what is it, that lady that puts the thing on? Anyway. But those questions that you had, you know, in terms of the stuff that you had, where people went and put the little post-its on there, there were some good questions on there. So I'm really looking forward to when you get all done and you put all that stuff together, because it's wonderful to see so much participation. And actually, not all of it was negative. A lot of it was positive. So, yeah. Also, the Latino Parent Summit had about 120 parents there. Yeah. And it was Latino, it was a Boulder County Latino summit, so you had parents from St. Brainerd and also from Boulder Valley. And we had both superintendents there that addressed the crowd, which was really wonderful, because everyone appreciated that. So we're -- as soon as some of that stuff kind of gets put together, maybe at a later date, I will give you some comments regarding some of the questions that parents were asking at their breakout sessions, et cetera. So, thank you. And I want to thank you, too, for your comments regarding late start. Appreciate it.
Kitty?
I want to thank you again for coming to speak to us about the impact of sleep deprivation.
It's something that I've been wondering about ever since my first child was in high school, and wondering why the heck the district isn't doing something. So I'm glad we're looking at that now. And also, just I'm really looking forward to tomorrow night, going to the meet and greet at Roomfield High School.
Shelley? Okay, and thank you for remembering Virginia Patterson, Kathy, and really important member of our community. And also, thanks for the Latino Parent Summit. I was able to go, so I think you were part of the organization. It was great to see all of our community partners there. I only got to go for the first hour and a half, but it was a -- it looks like a really great event. And then just another housekeeping, I'll be attending the meeting that we have. We have a quarterly meeting with CU, Boulder, the Boulder City, the Boulder County, and the school district. That's this Thursday. So if anyone has anything burning they want me to bring up, try to email me before Thursday, and Rob and I will both be attending. So, all right. So with that, I think we can move on to our first information item, which is the board policy review cycle.
All right, good evening. So this is a fairly brief follow-up to the work session that we had with you all about a month ago, a little over a month ago. As you know, part of Dr. Anderson's 100-day plan is to work with the board to develop a board policy review cycle, to evaluate and update, if necessary, board policies, to ensure alignment with the district's vision, mission, and new strategic plan. You'll note in the box on the side that we've officially reviewed 39 out of 264 policies in the last five years. So we've got an ambitious plan in front of us. And just to point out, Policy BG, so this is the board's policy on developing policy, the board states that it considers policy development its chief responsibility. So the objective with this policy review cycle is to bring policies up to date to ensure compliance with the vision, mission, and strategic plan, federal and state law, of course, and current best practice. And so we're developing, we have developed a four-year cycle to get through all of the policies. So where we are today is you have your policy on the policy process. Some of the other language from this, I think, is important for maybe the board and the community to reflect on. The board strives to reflect the community's values in its policies, and commits itself to an ongoing effort to engage the community regarding policy-level concerns. Policy development shall be aimed primarily toward the continual formation and evaluation of goals and desired end results for students, rather than toward daily district operations. And then, of course, you know, the policy adoption cycle is a study and an action item, and the board can study more than once. And the policy expects that the board shall review its policies on a continuous basis. So our schedule that we have circulated with the board, I think that was through the news and notes, has the detailed list of all the policies and how we're going to get through them in the next four years. And of course, we've always got flexibility to weave in other policies that we need to look at that aren't in the schedule as the law changes, or there's some board interest in a particular policy. We'll just slide that right in. We've already done that. I think the KH policy, we're weaving that one in. So the way that the staff will approach this work is, we did, as I said, sent out the detailed list of policies. So if there are any that elevate to the interest of the board, we can certainly provide more information, schedule a work session. But otherwise, cabinet has divvied up the policies, so there's a cabinet lead that works with their folks in their group to compare it to maybe a CASB model policy, other district policies, what we would like in our district as best practice. And so they bring that forward, evaluate whether other stakeholder inputs needed. It comes for a legal review. The whole cabinet takes a look at it, and then we would present it to the board for study. And then the board's role, as I mentioned, if there's something in particular the board wants to pull out, to gather more information, have a work session about it, we can certainly accommodate that. One thing we haven't done in the past, but we have, staff has looked at some policies in the past, but not, and even, but when changes weren't needed, we didn't have a way to kind of reflect that they actually had been reviewed. So some of these, so it's a little bit of a misrepresentation to say that, you know, we haven't looked at policies in five years. Most of them are working just fine, and maybe need some minor tweaks. So when we bring policy forward to the board for study, our recommendation for some might be, we think it's good the way it is, but what we'll do is have a notation saying reviewed date. So then it's obvious that they actually have been looked at. So some that say date of manual adoption, which we don't even know what that date is, sometime in the 60s, that at least we can have some feel like they've been looked at more recently. As I said, the work session will be one opportunity to look at a policy in more depth. And then, of course, the study, the board can bring something back to study, and then the action. And so having the study and action process allows for some public input as well along the way. And this is the timeline that we proposed and we're working with. So this school year, we're going to get through Section A, D, and J. And so this is a pretty big undertaking. The J section is, needs a lot of work, and there's many J policies. But this is the timeline. We can get through all of this in the next four years.
All right. Well, this is exciting. And I remember when I joined the board five years ago, I read every policy and marked them up. I don't know where that is anymore. But this is a great endeavor. Anyone have any questions or comments? Kathy?
I just want to say thank you, because I know this is a huge staff undertaking, and it's something I think that is really important for the board to do. So thank you for setting this out and giving us a schedule for going forward.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, then I think we can move on to the equity plan update.
All right. Good evening, President Marquess, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. It's a pleasure and an honor to present to you tonight the work of a number of staff members and community members that came together to develop this equity plan. So equity is a concept that can be defined in a variety of ways. And I think the way that you define equity has a lot of implications for the actions that we choose to pursue as a district. This definition was developed by the BVSD Equity Steering Committee, which is a group composed of BVSD leaders and teachers. And I'll give you just a few moments to read Our steering committee also helped to shepherd the development of a draft equity plan. This is work that we started last year, and we began by reviewing the very long history of equity efforts in BVSD, recognizing the initiatives that were successful in the past and what contributed to their success. We also identified some current opportunities for us to promote more equitable access to opportunity for our students. And based on that work, we developed eight themes for future action. And these overarching themes will serve as an organizing framework for the individual initiatives and actions to come. And those themes are clear accountability and guidelines, leadership and vision, system level structures, impact on instruction, professional learning, hiring process and staff retention, student activities, and process and partnerships. As part of the superintendent's 100-day plan, we're currently reviewing the draft equity plan to prioritize key actions, and make recommendations for which actions might be included in that future district strategic plan that we're working on. So in order to prioritize these actions, we decided to begin by establishing some really clear and measurable outcomes, which grew out of one of our eight themes, which was clear accountability and guidelines. So we decided to develop indicators of equity through a broad stakeholder process, including work with our district leadership team and with the community members' parents, excuse me, and students that came to our Fall Equity Summit. So we were really excited to have more than 150 people who attended our Equity Summit back on September 29th. And that included a lot of parents, school-based staff, and community members that were very interested in helping to support our district's equity work. So the attendees spent about four hours sharing personal stories, gaining a common understanding of our equity definition and themes, and generating feedback on the indicators of equity that they believed were most important for us to measure as we move forward. During the summit, the participants worked in small groups of no more than eight. Each group had a volunteer facilitator that helped keep the work of the group moving. And all participants were given a choice to sit at either a Spanish-speaking table or an English-speaking table. We set a feedback survey out to all of the participants after the summit. This is one of the questions that we asked them, which was, "Do you feel like the summit was inclusive of all voices?" And on a scale of one being not inclusive and five being very inclusive, the mean answer was 4.2. The second question we asked them was if they felt like progress was being made on setting clear and measurable goals for our equity work. And again, it was a five-point scale, with one being no progress, five being tremendous progress, and we came in at a 3.4. And then finally, we asked about the pace of the equity work, asking people to reflect on whether they felt that the pace that we were working at was not fast enough to really meet the level of urgency that's required by this work, or too fast to really meaningfully incorporate all the voices that need to be at the table. And we came in just under the middle at 2.8. We also asked our participants to weigh in on indicators of equity that might help us to set some measurable targets. So we had developed this list with our district leadership team and with the Equity Steering Committee, and then asked our summit participants to weigh in on which ones they would give the highest priority to. And these were the top three indicators that were selected by the summit participants. So next steps, the Equity Steering Committee will be synthesizing and prioritizing and developing a framework for equity outcomes based on the feedback that we got from our summit participants. We'll use those indicators to help us prioritize the actions from the other seven themes, and make recommendations for which of those actions might be included in the district's strategic plan moving forward. Thanks, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, board members, any questions? Kitty?
This is not exactly on the topic of this, but, and you may not know the answer to this, but if the federal government ends up deciding that there is no such thing as transgender, and it, you know, legally doesn't exist, how would that impact the district and our policies?
Well, I think you, as the board, are the keepers of the policies. And so I would defer to your judgment on that.
Other questions or comments? Richard?
I just want to thank you. It was a great turnout. There were a lot of discussion among the tables. I didn't stick around. I didn't stick around in the Spanish speaking table. I went to other tables too. And I saw a degree of differences in terms of what equity means to certain people, you know, in the different areas of the community and, which is not surprising because I also see that statewide when we look at what equity means in the rural districts versus equity in the urban districts and stuff like that. It's all over the place. But I really, really, really want to thank you so much for, for the work that you're doing and comments that I'm hearing, and this is really kudos for you, is that they really trust what you're doing and they really, really appreciate all the hard work that you're putting together and trying to get equity back as one of the pillars of the school district here in Boulder Valley. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your support.
Donna?
Thank you for all your work. On the, the one slide on do you feel the pace towards creating a more equitable system is, did anyone express how we would move that arrow a little towards the, you know, in the, I guess they're leaning towards not fast enough. Were there discussions between you and Richard? I mean, anybody can answer, on how you would move that a little faster?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And I haven't gone through all of the itemized feedback from all of the participants yet. I think that often the people who come to the equity summit are very passionate about the equity work and very eager for us to make progress on some of the actions. And so I'm really hopeful that as soon as we get through the process of developing these equity indicators that help us set targets, that we can dive into the work of actually do, starting to implement the actions. And that, I think, will help feel more satisfying to people that want to move the pace along a little bit faster.
Shelley?
Yeah, great presentation, Sam.
Thank you.
So I'm just wondering, as you look at these equity indicators, or the priority indicators, whatever they're called here, do you feel like those are enough or comprehensive enough that you can actually evaluate these, like, pretty complicated themes that, that you're about to go back to now with those indicators?
Yeah, that, that's also a great question. And I don't think that they are enough.
Yeah.
This is not a comprehensive list. I just wanted to share with you the ones that rose to the top, that our community seemed to be really interested in. So when Dr. Anderson and I have had conversations about developing this framework of equity indicators, we've talked about including measures of achievement, academic growth, access to opportunity, and district and school level conditions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, other comments? Kathy?
When I look at the attendance at the summit, I notice there are only two students. And I'm wondering if there's a plan to try to get more student voice in this plan as we go forward?
Yes, absolutely. So I have tasked some of the members of my team to work on getting together a student advisory committee on equity. So getting students to a summit on a Saturday can be a little bit challenging. So we're working on figuring out how we can go to the students and get student voice in helping us to shape this work moving forward because we think that that's really critical.
Richard?
Yeah, just another comment. Yeah, Saturday is pretty tough even for some of the families because, you know, they're, especially with the Latino community, they're all soccer families and to try and get them to a meeting on a Saturday is pretty hard. I was trying to find that place here where you looked at the, the history of equity. And it would be cool if you could share some of that at some point in time because I'd like to see what, how far back you went and, and what were some of the initiatives in the past and stuff like that around equity and what worked, what didn't work? Yeah.
Certainly, we, we have the, we took some really good notes on the timeline that we developed. We went back at least two decades on that.
Oh, wow. Yeah, because I remember, I remember the days of the school dropout prevention intervention plan and a lot of that stuff. So that's probably about three decades back. I don't know.
We might not have captured that.
[laughing]
Other comments or questions? And I also appreciate this presentation. I was sad that I wasn't able to participate as I did in the one in the spring, but I'm also thrilled to see that we're starting with some indicators. I think it'll really move the work forward and move us out of the ideation phase. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so our next item are the action items and consent grouping. And we have 8.1, approval of minutes, October 9th, 2018, special meeting. 8.2, approval of minutes, October 9th, 2018, regular meeting. 8.3, approval of minutes, October 16th, 2018, special meeting. 8.4, acceptance of donation, Medal of Honor PK8. 8.5, amendment to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at Netherland Elementary School. 8.6, cancellation of November 27th, 2018, regular meeting. 8.7, closeout to the general contractor contract for bond-funded work at Columbine Elementary School. 8.8, Fushiano grant of easements and license agreement. 8.9, grant, elementary school leadership empowering action for school improvement, EASI, Colorado Department of Education 18. Okay, so board members, would anyone like to pull any item from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none.
I just have a question on one of the items, so.
So let's, let's make a motion to approve and then we'll discuss and then we'll vote on the motion.
So moved.
Okay, okay, second by Kitty. All right, so any discussion on the items, Richard?
The only one that I have is the Columbine School. I mean, it's, I was surprised to see it there because, isn't it just like a brand-new school? Columbine Elementary?
8.7 for the closeout?
Yeah.
I think we have Rob coming to help us.
What was your specific question, Richard?
It, just, just a question in terms of it's a brand-new school and yet we're, we invested, what, 50, $574,000?
$570,000.
What did we do with that?
Um, there was innovation work was primarily the, the biggest portion, was $200,000 out there.
Asbestos?
No, innovation.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So, and then some, yeah, mechanical work, painting and flooring was the primary work.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions about items on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Laura, would you like to call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua is not present. Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. I think we can move on to item number 10, which is policy study. I think we're getting started with the A policies.
And, and so, board members, as we discussed, we would break out our policies into a separate category. So we've done that for you this evening. I'm going to ask Melissa to, to walk us through the policies and the recommended changes that, that were made by staff. And then, as we go through this, those that are, that you're comfortable with, we can move to action and we can move for approval to the consent agenda for next, our next meeting. And if those that we want to talk more about, we can, we can find an opportunity to do that. So I'll turn it over to Melissa, and she's going to be presenting from her desk over here, if that's okay for everybody.
All right, so I'm going to walk through the agenda item. The first policy, EBCD, emergency closings. And so Rob Price and his group have brought this forward. They are reflecting a lot of what's in the Casby model policy. This was one that was adopted, the date of manual adoption, whenever that was. So, and there's an associated regulation that they've developed as well. AA, so starting with section A, school district legal status. There's actually not a Casby model on, on this policy, but I've updated it to reflect changes since it was last, since it was adopted in 1976. It just seems to have some historical significance for the district since we do have kind of a complicated history. So I'm recommending that we just change it and update it.
And I'm wondering if we should do feedback after each policy, if we should walk through them all and then do feedback? What do you all, what do you all think?
After each one?
So let's go, can we go back to EBCD? Okay. Okay, we just heard about EBCD. Did I get that right? It's not right in front of me. Any comments? Okay, why don't we start with Donna?
I, I just have a question on all staff members except for teachers and, you know, work as soon as possible on emergency days. Do we have emergency days? Can you define that? And, and it's confusing. Do, do staff come in on emergency days? I'm thinking back to the flood, but what is emergency days exactly?
I'll ask, I'll ask Rob Price to come on up.
See.
And board members, as we go through these, we'll, I'll just ask the appropriate Cabinet member to come up so we can answer any questions and so we kind of find our rhythm. So thanks, Rob.
Yes. So it's going to be dependent, Donna. I thought it was important to have the language in there. As you mentioned, the floods, for example, that might have closed Crestview, but we could occupy other buildings. Then we would ask staff to come in, even though students wouldn't come in. Does that make sense? So when we had the floods, for example, in 2013, that was one where staff would have came in other than to Crestview, but other schools throughout the district we would have occupied.
And the other example, fire, the fire up there, same?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else?
And I have, I have a quick question. Do we need to, and this might be a question for all the policies. Do we need to, at the beginning of this policy where it says the decision will be rendered by the superintendent, do we need to put or designate, or can that be assumed as we think about all of these policies?
I believe that is in the regulation, Melissa.
Yeah, our practice has been to usually do superintendent and does, or designate.
Okay.
We have done that quite often.
I've seen it in other policies, so I was just, I wasn't sure if we should put that in this one.
It does state that in the regulation, but I'm not sure about the policy. I don't.
It does.
Okay. That's my only comment. Other comments on EBC? Is that it?
Well, one more.
Okay.
Regulation, should I? So I'll ask on the Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services will also notify the appropriate administrator for Communication Services, who will contact the media by 5:30 AM. Is that, does that include all of our media, meaning emails and texts and?
School messenger?
Yeah.
Yeah, so staff texts, the Board of Education would be notified.
Okay.
Then the specific news outlets, et cetera, would also be notified.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
And now do we want to address questions on the regulation for EBCD? Does anyone have questions on the regulation, separate from the policy? Okay, it sounds like those two, we can, we're done, we can move on.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about policy AA? The next policy is ABA, Community Involvement in Decision-Making. And what staff is recommending is that we recode this to the K section and align it with the Casby language. And so you've been presented with a red line on this one tonight.
I have a quick question on this one. It says all citizens of the district. Do we have the option of putting all residents of the district?
Um, yes.
Okay. Was it?
Yeah, you can have.
Right.
A lot of non-citizen, current residents, kids in school.
I mean, I think it's a different context, but it might be confusing to some.
And other, we've used community members also as a, kind of a phrase in other policies.
Other questions on ABA, formerly known as KCB? Is that it? Residents? Okay. All right.
And the next policy is ABC, Student Involvement in Decision-Making. And the staff recommendation of this one is to delete it along with the associated regulation. I mean, there really isn't any practical significance to this policy and sitting in the, the A section, so that's the recommendation of staff.
Comments or questions, board members? Yep.
Do you think it has some symbolic importance?
I mean, we, we've talked about it. We just, we don't, yeah, it just didn't seem to rise to that level. The, the community involvement in decision-making one had some language we thought that was relevant because we don't have many policies that relate to community members in that way. And we do have a, there's a staff involvement in decision-making policy that was picked up in the G section. So, but looking at the, the J section, there isn't an associated Casby policy. And, I mean, there are other, just the way that students interact in the schools, it doesn't, this policy didn't seem to really add anything.
No, it, it, I, I see your point, but I think about how many times we have students come here and speak to us about issues in the schools and their solutions for addressing those issues when we have SAC come, for example. And I just, I don't know if there's, it seems like there ought to be some way to include them in the decision-making model we hear, whether, we have here, whether it's policy or not, but I don't know. What do you guys think? It, it seems like maybe it belongs in policy somewhere, that, that we do have an obligation to listen to students who have input into, you know, their schools.
I had a similar question. I think in, in terms of it being in policy, I'm not that concerned whether it be in policy or not. I think.
I'm not sure where it belongs.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's, you know, there are a lot of policies we have that have nice statements, but whether it should be a policy, I'm not quite as convinced. So I'm fine deleting it, but I think that, I do feel that we've, the district makes efforts to include students through the middle school and high school advisory committees. And I don't necessarily need to put them in policy, but, you know, but I can go either way. And I am worried about the number of policies we have.
Are those groups in policy? The student groups? There, there's nowhere where we say we, we must have a student group?
I don't think there's anything, and I think it's just picked up through the, maybe the board policy around hearing from the student advisory group, although I don't even know if that's, that's just been a practice.
Is it in our agenda policy? Do they, aren't they listed in our board agenda?
I think that there's a section.
I can't remember it off the top of my head.
To hear from them.
Right. I think they have a permanent spot on our board agenda, but they never come.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I feel like something ought to be formalized around this. I, I'm not sure how.
Kathy?
I tend to agree with you, Shelley. I don't think it, is that burdensome to leave it as a policy and it make me uncomfortable when I saw it that we would delete it? I don't know where else we'd put it that would carry the weight. So I, I didn't see it down, so I didn't leaving it.
Okay, Donna?
On, on my notes, looking back over this, it was a couple of days ago, so I always have to refer back to all my little pages of notes, but I, I did have student voice and a question mark. Because in the past, haven't, hasn't, haven't we had the SAC come and present at the board meetings and they come to Casby? And I, I just wanted to know if I remembered that correctly. But I, I kind of like the idea of it being here. It just seems a good statement from us.
Okay.
I don't know that they're involved in decision-making at the district level.
No.
Could you make a recommendation for another place in our policies where it might make sense? Is that?
Yeah, I think, I'll, I'll let Richard speak, but then can kind of address the board on what I'm hearing and kind of direction that I'll, I'll give staff moving forward.
No, I was just going to say that I can't remember the timing of it, but I do remember very clearly that you did have students that were part of board meetings.
Yeah.
You know, where they were actually sitting there and they would talk a little bit about what, you know, what, what their thoughts were and stuff like that. And I don't know what, but it wasn't, this was codified 1978 is what I'm seeing. It's a long time ago. But I do recall that you, we actually had a group of the, the students, and I think they selected among themselves or something like that. But I thought that was a good move. And I'm not sure what happened with it. But I, I, I do think that we ought to have something in a form of policy. to have something, um, in a form of policy or wherever it might sit, 'cause I think what it'll do is also send a message that we do appreciate, uh, and it'll send a message to our administrators and all of that, that this is, this is a policy, and we do want, we do expect that to happen.
Okay, Rob?
So what I'm hearing from the board is what I know about all of you, which is that you serve on this board, um, to serve kids and to serve students, and that, um, understanding that maybe a, as, as, as it goes, this may not sit as a policy, but it is the, it is the sentiment of the board that we ensure that students are valued and, and their voices are heard, and that, and that we go back and look through our policies, and where does, where, where do we have that? Um, so if, so if we were to, to delete this policy, that you would all be insured that we've placed either in policy or regulations how we empower students to be involved, is, is, am I hearing that correctly?
I would strengthen sentiment to core value, sentiment sounds too wishy-washy to me.
Okay, any other comments?
Good correction.
I, I really appreciate that summary, and, um, so would that be something you'd bring back to us and tell us where that was located now, and...
Yeah, so I think that, that the plan would be we would get with staff, um, we'd keep this on study, right, so we wouldn't take this off, and then when we come back and, and, and speak to it, we could kind of let you know where, where that is, and, and, and once you see that, then potentially you could then, then remove the policy.
Okay, all right, next one.
Say, I'm gonna talk about the next two together, so, we have a current AD policy, but no ADA policy, and so what I'm proposing is that we take out our current AD language and put it into a new ADA policy, um, so then our new AD policy will align with CASB, which has, um, the mission, and that's for legal reasons, it's, it'll be helpful to have this, uh, the language, um, of the CASB model as our mission, um, to pick up the safety requirement, that it'll just be more clearly in line with the statute, um, and then, um, the CASB model ADA policy is actually called Educational Objectives, but right now, we're proposing that we just recode our current educational philosophy policy, and later we'll bring this back to the board for study, and, um, once we've gone through the strategic planning process, um, and we can compare it to the, the CASB language and bring that back. So right now, it's really just adding in the school district mission, um, and then recoding our other policy.
Okay, Kitty?
Yeah, I'm wondering on the proposed ADA, if we could find some more inclusive language instead of talking about man's classic quest for knowledge? We could, you know, humanities or, or something, I mean, without sounding clunky, but I really don't like the word man's.
I, I use the term at the top, re-coded, with the current date to reflect that we're not actually kind of endorsing the...
Okay.
But if you're, if you'd like, I can put revised, and we can switch that word.
I have the same reaction, Kitty, I, I think we can change it to human or something and call it revised, if that's what we have to do.
All right.
I also have a, a, a question about the mission, I mean, the CASB mission is not our mission, so, uh, when I read that, I was like, this is not our mission and policy. We very clearly went through a process where we described our vision and our mission, and that isn't it, so, I, I'm sure there is a reason to do what you're suggesting, but it looks odd to me not to have our mission and policy. Is there a way to put our mission in and, and add a safety, like clause beneath it or something, so that it's ours still?
So I agree, Shelley, that was on my notes, uh, because I pulled up the, you know, the webpage and printed that out, and I thought, I don't remember reading it just like this, so I think it, it can be very confusing to read this mission and then go to the webpage and see the mission, and, and the wording's not the same, and Kitty, thank you, that was a good comment as well.
Okay, uh, other comments? Some, uh, maybe swap out the mission, I think, and, but I, we have to retain this part about safety, is that right?
Right, right, I'll weave that in with ours.
Yeah, okay.
Like, I'll figure out how to kinda combine them, that's fine.
Add it, not weave it in, because...
Right, yes, yes, yeah. I won't mess with the one we already have.
And, and do we need to have the educational philosophy? Do we need to have that policy? I've, we've never referred to it on my five years. Like, oh, we better check in with our philosophy.
I think that's, that was the thinking, that, that's good work for the board to, to tackle.
Okay.
And having that kind of statement, but maybe we're not in a position to really tackle it today.
Okay, okay, all right. Yeah, Shelley?
Uh, I, I really like how inspirational that one is, personally, I know it sounds a little lofty and all, but it, I think it's great.
I, I think it would be great to then, I, I, and I agree, I think it's a great statement, but since we've never really shared it with the public or used it, it would be interesting to see if we wanna elevate it somewhere else, if it's really important to us.
I, I, I think it's important, especially now with all the equity work that's going on, and, uh, that should be part of the philosophy of the school district, and, uh, if you look at this current philosophy, it talks about provide equality of opportunity, I think we might wanna do some wordsmithing on that and talk a little bit about equitable opportunities for education of the individual, et cetera.
Other comments? Okay, next, is that it? All right, any other general comments, board members, did this work out, the way of doing it one by one with feedback? Did everyone get the policies in time to look over them? Okay, and what was that, that was five days early, I think? Okay.
The, the, the one thing that we contemplated is, do we lump them all in the one item, or do we, do we bullet out each policy within its own line item? So, I mean, that would do, you know, as we think about just, just preferences for the board, we could do that either way, does that make sense? So, as opposed to ten point one and having all the policies, ten point one might be policy EBCD, ten point two might be policy AA, ten point three...
For study, it's, it's fine for me to do it this way, but, um, when we go on to action, we should probably have them separated out.
Does that work for everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay.
And Melissa, do you have all the feedback that, that you feel like you need so we can go back and work on this? Wonderful, congratulations, board, that was a good one.
Off to a strong start, I think.
Good.
All right, um, so our next item is study items, it's agenda setting, hmm, agenda, I think it should be agenda setting, not study items, anyway, uh, any, um, items for agenda settings or our ever-growing list? Shelley, did you? Donna?
Thinking about the, um, the CASB resolution on dyslexia and, um, whether we're really doing our part as a district to support the screening in the way that's described in that, um, in that resolution, and I'm wondering if we should talk again about a universal screener for dyslexia in kindergarten, and I, I, I think that would be consistent with what we just said we voted for, and I feel like there's probably enough interest in coming back to that, to talk about that.
So you're gonna put dyslexia back on, okay?
Screener, the, just the screener.
Oh, just the screener topic?
Yeah, yeah, at kindergarten, so...
Kindergarten, so, okay, kindergarten screener goes on to the agenda list, would that be something we would do through the prioritization process?
I, yeah, I mean, it's not like an emergency or anything, but I think we should decide if we're gonna do that before we make budget decisions, so that we can include that.
And do we need an RFI to see where all that is? We haven't had a dyslexia update in a little bit.
Uh, I think that's a good idea, I can do that.
Do you wanna start with that?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Well, Donna put one in today, you don't have to do it.
Well, maybe not the same question you're asking.
Yeah, more specific, to you, to your point, a more specific around what your questions was, I think would be helpful.
Okay, so you are gonna do an RFI, so let's start with the RFI, okay, Donna?
I'm okay.
You're okay, great. Okay, any items for agenda down here?
Oh.
Okay.
I, I do have a question.
Yep.
Thank you for the comment on the dyslexia screener, I think that's important as well, but we, I thought we had already put it, put that on agenda, but, so I don't know whether to bring this up again, but with budget setting and everything, um, subpay, substitute pay, so...
Subpay.
I, I think I mentioned it though, last board meeting.
Is it, was it on, did you check the list? Is it there?
I don't have that document, but put it on there if it's not.
Okay.
And I have...
Yeah, Kathy?
It came up today during the audit committed me, audit committee meeting, and I can send an RFI to start this, but I'd like to know where we are in our textbook adoptions, 'cause I know we stopped, and then we kinda picked it up for literacy for K five, but I don't know where we are in anything else, and I know we did math a while ago, but, like Donna brought up today, science, and, so I'll send an RFI on that, 'cause I, with some one-time money available, I'd like to know kind of where we are in that, and what the current thinking is on, if we're even still old-school textbooks, or what are we doing?
And to add to that, um, I think Leslie mentioned that, I had a, a communication from a parent about the science textbook at the high school, uh, being old, and, um, so Leslie mentioned that she thought it was up for review this year, but that would be good to find out, for sure.
It's a great, great RFI, great, yeah, absolutely, we'll, we'll make sure we clarify that for you all.
So does someone need to submit an RFI?
I'll do it.
You're gonna submit an RFI? So we're gonna start with that before we put it on the agenda list?
Yes.
And we already have an RFI on subpay, so the subpay will go into the agenda list, okay, great, any other topics? All right, with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.